Here's what I see, and I'm not a big class warfare kind of guy.
Right.
I'm completely against that. However, I do know that people who are poor sometimes have to consent because they have no other choice. And so thereby, I see in richer townships where we're getting zoning and all this other stuff, it becomes harder and harder for people that just want to live simple, to be able to live simple.
My township is a prime example of this.
Because all of a sudden, they get pushed into this, well, you're here by consent. Well, there was a time that I was a, I was an economic prisoner of where I lived. I couldn't move if I wanted to. So I didn't really consent, but I didn't have any other choice because it was forced on me that I had to pay those things so that these people had a nice golf course. I couldn't use it because I couldn't even leave there.
And, and that's what breeds the kind of resentment that gets you, um, a president who played to that.
Yes, absolutely.
In the, in the, in the presidential campaign. So there's still certain life in the country. That's the good news.
Right. But what I'm saying is when we start, and let's, let's, let's face facts, it's not poor people that get elected to city council. It's not. It's not poor people that get elected as sheriff. It's not poor people that get elected in any of our elected positions.
Generally speaking.
I mean, just to run for sheriff, I know it cost me quite a, quite a bit of money.
Sure.
Just to run for sheriff.
Thousands and thousands.
Yeah. Not everybody can do that. So what consent do they have when we get there? And somehow, sometimes we forget that not everybody is, is, is as well off as we particularly are at the time.
They all have a vote though, and that means they, and they all have the right to associate. So if you teach them, right? To associate, if you teach them how to, to do this, because the schools aren't teaching them adequately anymore.
At all.
At all. I'm talking about public schools now.
Yeah, at all.
And if that's the case, then, then fellow citizens have to reach out to fellow citizens and say, okay, um, here's how you do it.
And this is, this is exactly what this broadcast is about.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't cost a lot of money.
And that's what this broadcast does, and that's what the HJP does.
Right.
Except for throughout town, the HJP has been turned into some devil worship group or some, I mean, you ought to hear just some of the stuff that's said about us that's just unbelievable. And so here's this influence of direct democracy trying to stop those of us that are trying to educate the public.
Well, it doesn't sound like they're working.
We, we, well, we could.
Some of us won't give up.
There's so many rabbit holes when we talk about this.
Oh, yeah.
Um, my, really, really what I'm talking about is taxation is a form of theft. You say, well, it's not theft, it's, it's consent. I've heard that argument, okay? I hear that argument. I understand that argument. I disagree with the statement, but I understand why you would say that. Let's, you said that taxation is supposed to be about protecting those basic natural rights or inalienable rights. Well, when they go to, when, for taxation for my local community gives domestic harmony $300, that's not any of those.
Well, it would be protecting the, uh, the, the, uh, safety of the families.
Safety of the families in domestic harmony, you're saying?
Yeah.
Or, okay, so why didn't they give it to, uh, Satan Anonymous?
Uh, because there's, to govern is to choose.
Isn't that going to be very subjective?
Yeah, well, to govern is to choose, right? When you're thinking of what ruling means or what governing means, there are basically four things you're doing. You're thinking about it, right? You're deliberating.
Okay.
Whether by yourself or in a group, you're deciding, you're making a decision.
Yup, yup.
Right? That's the choosing part. You're commanding with a law, right? Some sort of, a law is a command.
Okay.
Um, or a resolution, or some sort of, some sort of thing, and then you're enforcing it.
Right, right.
And, um, so to govern is to choose, to, to, um, to give an, just to take it away from domestic harmony for a moment, I heard somebody say one time, well, we can't fix the roads in, in Hillsdale City. Why not? Well, the first ones you choose, everybody else who has a bad road is going to object. Why not my road? Well, the answer is that practically speaking, you have limited number of resources to do something, and you're going to have to choose some agency, some, some project that you're going to have to do. And that's just, that's just practicality. So when you say, why not this one, why not that one? Well, you have, um, uh, you just have to make a judgment at some point of you're going to, you're going to do it this way and not that way. There may be an equal argument on the other side to, to, to funnel money to, instead of doing Vine, Mead and Garden Street this year, we should do Sumac or, you know, some of the other streets that are in desperate need of repair. Why not do the other one? Well, the answer is we have to choose something.
Well, I don't think we have to choose domestic harmony, so like.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's a policy issue.
Yeah, yeah.
My, my point is simply that if you're going to, if you're going to choose, if you're going to try to protect the people who are very vulnerable, these women who are in these, uh, in these situations.
Abuse and situations.
If you're going to do that, and that's the protection of their natural right to be safe, then you're going to have to decide how are you going to do that? And, um, that's a matter for policy debate, you know?
Well, and that's, and I think where we come down to it is, it, a lot of times, it's how does it look? What does it look like?
Well, I'm not, you know, what, what it looks like should be that the, the, um, municipal government, the elected officials and the appointed officials should explain it.
Well, and, and my thing is if the domestic harmony needs it to be protected, then that should be something that should be going directly to them and not as a, well, we can donate from the township taxes to there.
Yeah, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they have a fundraiser?
That comes to them.
That's, that's a policy issue though. It's basically a policy issue.
But that's what happens, it comes down to, it looks bad.
There's certainly no reason why a government couldn't, well, if, for example, in the founding era, the governments, uh, state governments were entitled to, uh, to, to choose an established church. That was not unconstitutional in the, in the, during the founding period. And that's a, that's an issue, uh, that was politically settled.
How does McCordy?
A lot of this stuff is, you know, a lot of this stuff should be settled politically in terms of, and, uh, just as long as we keep the general framework of the constitution and the declaration in mind.
Well, how does, uh, McCordy Park, um, how does that, how does that, uh, directly involve my civil liberties or, uh, natural law?
It may not. I'm not, I'm not saying that every, you know, I, I'd have to get into every specific detail and I can't possibly do that.
But I guarantee Hillsdale City or township or county, um, they have parks in your community too. Right?
Right.
So like when it's time to vote on a millage or vote on a park millage, because we have a park millage over in my community, I know you guys probably don't, actually I don't think Hillsdale does, but.
Well, the other bad thing with Somerset though is too, they have a surplus. Somerset really is the tail that wags the dog of Hillsdale County.
I was going to talk about this.
They're a very, very, very rich community. In fact, most of our taxes that come into the county come out of that one township, that one township alone.
It's like a significant amount.
Yeah, it's huge. It's the tail that wags the dog here of this county. And so what happens though is then people that, and the sad thing is, it's people that don't even live here, so they can't homestead, so they don't even get to vote on any of the rules, but they're paying the highest amount of taxes because they're very well off and they live other places. The problem is people like John that aren't, he, he's not a, he's not a neurosurgeon somewhere. He works on computers for free. He lives in that community. He's paying for a park when they've already got a huge surplus that they don't even need to charge for.
Well, that's, that's something that he, he's got to either settle politically, right? Uh, through a political campaign.
Well, that's what I.
Or, or move.
Well, that's, that's what I do is like, and I, and, and that's very, I mean, I, I get it.
You've consented to be part of that community now. Either you change it from within or you walk away.
And that's the goal.
Okay, there you go.
That's why we're here.
But we could change it with pay to play. Okay?
Yes, you could, but that's a political issue.
Right.
That you should bring up in your, in your, in your municipality to do that.
So like, uh, so the original question, as a politician, whereas you're lining the sand with taxation morals, I think that would be hard, I, I know it would be hard on me to justify taxation and, and justify morals when it says thou should not steal. And like you said, let's define stealing or let's define consent.
Consent, that's the key thing.
Well, I'm really black and white. I don't like the muddy waters.
Well, that's, then, then.
So like, and I, we can agree to disagree, then I'll buy you a beer after.
The best, the best is the enemy of the good.
Yeah, so, so.
That's, listen to that. The best is the enemy of the good. If you're striving like Murray Rothbard did for market society or something like that, that will prevent you from doing practical things in the real world.
That's, I've been told that.
Improve it.
Yeah, I've been told that.
And that's moral, is my point. Morality is not exhausted by, uh, blindly adhering to an ideal or a set of rules. You've got to make, morality also consists of prudential judgments, practical judgments of what I can achieve.
Based on principles.
And on, guided by, based on principle.
You said the word better.
Yeah.
That's an arbitrary word.
No, it isn't. Better? No, no. As a matter of fact, it is not an arbitrary word. Human beings have a nature. And therefore the standard for human beings is to fulfill their, their nature as, as they were created, right? And so that's the standard. But it's, uh, it's not always, but the very fact that you've entered into civil society means that you're, you're, you've seen that practically speaking, you have to compromise some of your natural rights in order to secure the core of them. That's the whole principle. That's basically the, the philosophy of the American founding.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, I, I sort of, I, I mean, I agree probably 95% with that, but there's a 5% there that, to quote Yoda, do or do not, there is no try. So either if you're elected, do things morally with a principle, or you lose the consent of the governed. Now, one of the problems.
And that's, that, that's the great check on, that a republic has.
Supposed to be.
Well, if you, if people don't stand up, then they better.
But, but, and, but that's part of the problem. Our progressive ideology of John Dewey in our public schools for so long.
Exactly.
Has created such a huge amount of zombies.
And that's why you guys should start talking to public, uh, board of education people.
Sure.
That was, because that's really, the core of the problem is education.
Sure.
You know, I understand that Hillsdale College sometimes comes in for a bit of criticism in, in the city of Hillsdale, but at least they're trying to teach that.
That's why we had you come on the show today, to grab, grab some credibility, because getting people on the show is another thing, right?
Well, and the other thing is a lot of times we get attacked because of some of the things that we say. And I've always said, I absolutely 100% agree with the, the stated principle and mission of Hillsdale College. I don't always agree with the decisions of their administration.
Sure.
But for the most part, I believe that the professors, the, the frontline people and the students all believe in the principles that are, that are expounded there.
And by the way, there's some, there's some, uh, divergence of opinion on what the proper principles are within that, within the people you just mentioned, the faculty, um, the.
But you have to have that because that's part of the debate.
Right.
That keeps us seeking the good.
That's right.
Um, but, but like I say, sometimes we get a bad rap of, uh, because let's, the, the, uh, the airport issue for one. A lot of us believe that that is, a lot of that's being done on behalf of the college. A lot of us believe it. Now, if it's not so, then shame on city council for not being transparent enough for us to see it.
Well, what I would like to do on that one is to have a, a work session of the city council on the airport. We have a new airport manager in place now, and, uh, she's an experienced pilot and so on. Um, I think, um, the, one of the, some of the newest council members, Greg Stutchel and Ray Briner, were both interested in having one. Uh, I think we all need to be brought up to speed on exactly why, for example, why is our airport a municipal airport? Uh, a lot of airports are county airports.
Yeah.
A lot of them are privately owned. Oh, this goes back a, a long time and it's, uh, I'm not sure if it was ever anything other than a municipal airport.
2000, 2002, I had a business plan to take over that airport and do exactly what's being done out there right now, only with private money. And I was shut down.
Well, okay.
Well, well, stop it. I don't want to pay for that airport. Stop it.
So anyway, the point is that I, you know, I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to have a discussion of the airport, uh, in a work session of the council. I'd like to see more council work sessions. Uh, where I come from, uh, I moved out here in 2000 from Monmouth County, New Jersey. All the municipalities had regular sessions, two a month, just the way we do. We also had work sessions before those council meetings, maybe a week before. And they were open to the public, open public meetings. The only difference was you couldn't pass anything. You couldn't enact anything. It really helped the, the council members understand the issues. They could bounce ideas back and forth with one another.
They probably understood more of the people's concerns as well.
Yeah, exactly. Because the people can, can talk in those meetings too. The other thing, I'll, I'll tell you something. We had a, a meeting, it's, it's, uh, last night, which was a, a work session. Uh, the public was invited, some people that you know were, were at that session. And it was on the, um, the signage, they call it branding. How, what kind of, what kind of color scheme should the?
That's part of the rising tide thing, isn't it?
Rising tide. So, and, and people came away from that. Uh, everyone in that room that I, that I talked to was very pleased with that. From all sides of the spectrum.
Well, when there's transparency, usually you get more comfort.
You know, I, I said this at the HJP one time. I said, you know, if you want, if you want to create a conspiracy, start a group, don't tell anybody what it's about and make it secret. And what will happen is everybody will fill in the, everybody will fill in the blanks.
That's right.
And it's never going to be good. So if you want people to, you've got to be diligent in transparency.
More transparency than you would normally would be.
Absolutely. Because if not, if you've got one thing left out, people will fill in that blank.
Right.
Don't allow people to fill in the blank because it, it's bad on both sides. It's bad for the council, it's bad for the people.
Well, well, can, can services be pay to play? Let's keep, let's be honest. Like, I mean, let's start with some basic ones.
Some services could be.
Could parks be pay to play?
It could, if, if that's a matter of policy, they could, they could be.
I mean, I'm not saying we have the answer here, the policy answer here.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to study it.
I mean, could you imagine it in your brain now?
We're talking hypothetical right now.
Yeah, right. I can certainly imagine that to be the case.
Could, could fire department?
I doubt it. Um, I think that you have to be very careful about, like a fire department, if you had a fire department that's, I assume what you'd mean is that if you call the fire department, you'd be paying them to come out.
I'm, no, what I'm saying is like, I pay, like, I can opt out of paying the fire department. Not like.
I would, I would be very skept, I want to see someone who did that effectively.
Like if there's a way to do it?
Because I think it would erode the, 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 the fire department. I mean, we have enough trouble paying for fire trucks right now. If you had pay to play for, for that, I think it, it, I'd be very reluctant. I'm not in principle against it, I'm just saying it's, it's, I'd be very skeptical about it.
We've gone a hundred years paying, being forced to pay for it, right? So like the, even the idea of changing that.
Public safety was, was municipally funded from the get-go in this country. It really was. If you, you know, you know, uh, this might not be for the average person, but you guys are really fascinated by this stuff. Uh, a former colleague of mine named Tom West has written a book called The Political, Political Theory of the American Founding. And what he does is not just talk about the, the famous names like Washington and Jefferson and those guys. He gets back into the state constitutions and the civil laws.
Yeah, yeah.
And he explains all this stuff very, he lays it out very nicely.
Cool.
And so if you guys get, it's, it's, it's on Amazon, it's, uh, easy to get, so just a, just a side note.
When we make statements like taxation is a form of theft, we're seeing it like that's what we believe. We're in, like, we will push for changing people.
It's easy to understand why you would say that because we live in such a bureaucratic environment.
Right, that's right.
Where your voice is limited.
Very limited.
The other thing is, let me say this, when we say that, it's not like we're going, uh, we're not those, we're not the anarchist kind of, well, it's either pay to play or I'm not being part of it. No, that's not what we're saying. Sometimes we're saying that just to get people, it's like the, uh, the psychological thing where I go so far the other way just to get the pendulum to set in the middle somewhere. So sometimes what we do is we push the extreme to get the pendulum to come back to the middle because some people won't even venture to move that pendulum.
Or even create ideas.
Say that, yeah. We create some ideas, create some controversy.
Let me tell you a good, a good pay, uh, pay to play system, and that's our state park, okay? You can't get in a state park unless you pay, right?
Right.
All right. That's just a prime example. I'm not saying that that's going to work on everything. I don't really know. But if we don't actually draw up the question if that's possible, how are we ever going to move forward with that?
Or try, or get some of our township supervisors and townships to understand that not everybody can afford to pay for that park because there's a lot of people that are struggling. So the people that do have the free time to pay for the park, let them pay for the park because they'd be more than happy to.
I mean, the taxation has stretched so far to where I'm seeing my local police department on taxpaying dollar dimes handing out cake to kids at Walmart. That's how far, that's just how far that, that pendulum has gone.
Yeah.
Where, where are we going to stop and draw that line? Yeah, you, you know what? That does better our society, right? We, I can fathom and think that better's a society. But are we doing it morally?
And should we do that off the people's taxpaying dollars? I mean, my thing is, I think that's all right to do as long as there's people that are putting into it. And I don't think there's, there's one person that if you said, hey, we're trying, we're going to try to drum up some money for the police and fire to sit there and take kids shopping, I don't think there's a person in this county that wouldn't crack their wallet open and give more than what they got, than what they were paid in taxes. You see what I'm saying?
Instead of extracting.
And it's just like that, it's that theory that Benjamin Franklin said. He said, when we gave willingly to England, he said, it was a rarity that they didn't give 50 pieces of silver back. He said, but when the king started to demand it, there could never be enough.
Well, the duty of the police officer is to protect and serve, right? According to the law.
The Constitution.
Force the laws.
Protect and serve the Constitution.
Right. And, uh, and, and well, and protect and serve the, the people that, that is, that are being governed.
The sixth, sixth article, it's to, is to protect and serve the Constitution.
Right, but that's not the, that's the police power of the federal government. I'm talking about municipal police power. So you're protecting people, in other words, you're protecting people and property, that's all I'm trying to get.
Are they not, oh, so like, local cops?
So what I'm saying, I'm actually helping you make your point though.
Go ahead.
Which is that you should, so.
Yeah, so leave him alone.
So, so don't, yeah, so leave me alone here, you know? Respect my property rights. Get off my land.
You know, I should have, I should have warned you beforehand, if I, if we cut each other off, it's natural in this environment.
Yeah, we do this all the time. I've been in a bar before. So, so, yeah, so anyway, uh, the, the point being that, uh, the police, uh, police powers should be restricted to police powers. Fire powers should be restricted to fighting fires primarily. If they want to do that on their spare time as volunteers in the community, that's terrific. As good public relations.
Sure.
You don't want the kids to be afraid of cops.
No.
And you want them to be, see them as friendly forces.
What they say, what they say, Will, because, um, I directly make comments on the police department's Facebook page when they do this stuff. Um, what they do, like, okay, this summer, for an example, uh, they drove around to lemonade stands and took pictures with the kids. Like, it's a good, it's a good feeling thing for the kids. We call it hero status, John and I, or the people that I follow, um, we call this hero status because they get this psychological hero status now when they go to ask for taxation revenue. Nobody's going to say no to that, right?
You can't say no to a hero.
You can't say no to a hero. So what they do is they go around, take, the sheriff department went around on taxpaying dollars in the fuel tank, drove it around to these communities, and when they're supposed to be doing work, they're taking pictures with kids. Now, I know.
That should be done, in my opinion, that should be done on their spare time.
Sometimes it is. A lot of times they get, they do voluntary time, but there's still fuel, right?
Even if it's not done on their spare time, my, my problem with it.
They're wearing that suit.
My problem becomes moral with it, when we're taking the pictures and then publicizing them. Now, if you're doing it to make those kids feel good, then there didn't need to be pictures published anywhere, did there? Because you're stopping and talking with those children. When I was growing up, we had state police officers that would stop next to where we were. We had a little baseball diamond, they'd come out, pitch a couple pitches, talk to us, and they'd take off. Nobody thought it was a bad thing, but there wasn't anybody there taking pictures of it and putting it on a social media so that they could go back and go see what good guys we are? We're heroes.
See, the thing.
No, that's a moral issue. You should be doing it for what's right.
If you got on there, you would see that these mothers and these fathers of these children would, well, they, they gravel at, am I saying that word right? Gravel at, at the feet of the sheriff's department saying, thank you, you're my hero. This is the wording that they use, like, you're my hero. Uh, they, you know, it's great that, that we're, we're going to support our heroes. And this is the word, and then, and you know what? A lot of times it's the upper echelon of the community.
The elites.
The elites and their wives and their, and their husbands. And, and these are the people, and so they created this like hero status. And so they're going to get every budget passed if they need a budget. Like in my community, he went out, my, my chief of police went out and bought two riot shields and helmets.
Two what?
Riot shields and helmets.
Because you've been reading about all the riots in Somerset.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying like, there's no, there's no limit.
Well, that's, 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 that's where you have to have elected officials who just say, you know, just say no.
But too many of them can't.
So morally in taxation, I, I come from the perspective, uh, I, I do believe taxation is a form of theft, and I do believe everybody can have their cake and eat it too. We just have to think about it. I'm not saying.
I don't believe that everybody can have their cake and eat it too.
That's okay.
I think it's physically impossible.
Yes, I do too. See, this is where Will and I agree against you.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, and you guys are wrong, but it's okay.
We have the right to our opinion, even if it is wrong, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so no, what I'm, I'm just saying, uh, for me morally, I cannot take from someone to pay for what I want, whether there's consent or not. Whether there's consent or not, I, I look at it like this. If I got in your car at nighttime and I took a quarter out, and I went over to his house and I took a quarter out, and I gave it to a local kid shelter, right, I'm, I'm not stealing, you know, so.
That would be your money.
If I took a quarter, if I hopped in your car at nighttime and got in your change jar and I took a quarter.
That's stealing.
And then I got in his car.
What you use it for, it's stealing.
That, that, that's right. And that's how I view domestic harmony. That's how I view, you, you see what I'm saying?
You'd have to, you'd have to go on a case by case basis.
Right, but, and that's what I'm doing.
And, uh, so what I'd say, so, so what I'd say is that domestic harmony is, is doing something that is, uh, is valuable to suppo- to protect the lives and welfare of the children, vulnerable children and mothers and so forth. And it should be, and so, and it can be done, if, if it's more economical to do that, uh, because they get donations in addition to just this relatively small amount that they get from the tax dollars, then that's great. That's multiplying the, uh, the effect.
Why, why can't I opt out of that?
Now, let's, let's use, let's use.
Well, bec- the, the reason you can't opt out of it is because you're part of that civil society or community that you've, that you've chosen.
Yeah, but can't we change that?
And that's. Could you change it? Sure, you could change it. But the question is, question is, should you change it? And that's, and that would be on a case by case.
That'd be another question, right?
But let's, like, like I'm saying, with this, let's go back.
Could you? Sure. I mean, the, the, I'm sure that domestic harmony was not always given a don't.
Not giving them money. I'm talking about change the way that it's taken and given. So like, like.
Can't, it's, it's possible to do all sorts of things within the limits of the law.
Today, so like, computers can help us do a lot of different things today. We sort of generalize things now, and like, we can't do this. Like, we got a lot of taxation without representation when you have two homes. So like, like, if you own a house in Lake Leanne, but you own a house in, say, Taylor, Michigan, and Taylor is your main house and.
Uh, my, my view is that you'd probably, if, if you took that to, you could do things on small basis that way, but if you took it to core things like fire protection and police protection and so on.
Emergency services.
Emergency services, that kind of roads, infra- basic infrastructure, things like that. You'd, uh, you'd erode the, the.
And that, and that's very well possible, but that, just the idea of talking about it.
See, you know, I'd, I'd wanna make sure that that has, who's, who, uh, who's gonna be doing that to show me that that, I'm a show me kinda guy. Show me where it's been done effectively, and it hasn't eroded the, 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 the very basis of civil protection.
Cause I, I have two points on that then. I have two points on that. First off, where we were talking about, uh, domestic harmony.
Uh huh.
Um, let's go back to that principle that, that Franklin talks about. And that is, and, and this was demonstrated right at the Somerset Township meeting. When they were going to give three hundred dollars out of tax money, one person stood up and said, I've got a hundred dollars. If we take a collection here.
No, Tim Shufflin, what he said was that he would give, put up three hundred dollars, cause that's what they're gonna take, is three hundred dollars. Every ti- I think, if I'm not mistaken, if not all the townships in Hillsdale County pay this.
Well, it's, but it's a voluntary thing.
Yeah, I get it, but, but every township does it. So, I mean, at least I've seen a couple myself. I'm generalizing here, but I do believe probably most of the townships do pay this three hundred dollars. But, Tim Shufflin stood up and said, don't take the money from the people. I'll give three hundred dollars if the board matches. So they'll get six hundred dollars from us. Every member on the board has to pitch in, and that, they didn't. They wouldn't do it.
But the thing is, when you ask for donation, most times, if it's a good cause, people will climb over themselves to give. But when you start taking, there's never enough. That's a principle that Franklin pointed out very clearly. Now, my second, my second point, you said we gotta be careful about public safety. Those issues and doing that.
No, no, public, uh, emergency services.
Emergency services, okay. In nineteen seventy-three, Hillsdale County had a sheriff, an undersheriff, and a deputy. That's all we had at the sheriff's department. A sheriff, an undersheriff, and a deputy. Nineteen seventy-three. Two thousand thirteen.
The population has not changed.
Forty-nine employees from three. We had forty-nine. When we do the percentage on that, that's a huge percentage of increase. But yet, when we do the numbers on crime, crime hasn't risen even close.
No crime.
To the same amount.
No crime, population same.
And when we look at our population, our population actually dropped down for a little bit and then came back.
Yeah, but they're within numbers.
So, so how do we now justify from three to forty-nine, why not a hundred?
That's the.
Why not six hundred?
That's the political process. You've, you've gotta, you've gotta have a candidate who runs for the sheriff's department who wants to cut back.
Yep.
Well, it's not just that. Like, even in Somerset, we, um, we have a town with zero crime, Will. Like, literally, I mean, I say that. You can't stop crimes of passion, which I don't think we have right now in Somerset, like where if you catch your wife having an affair, you kill her. Like, you can't stop that. That's going to happen in a community, uh, here and, here and there. But those are really very blue moons usually. Um, but, and you can't stop petty theft or like petty, like, children crime, like spray painting the school or something, no matter how many police, the police officers.
Empty hands is the devil's workshop, so you're gonna have that.
So we have a town virtually with no crime. We had two, uh, two point five officers, now we got three officers full-time, and we just keep adding and adding and adding.
And you have riot gear.
Yeah, we, oh, now we got riot gear. So, so we have a boat that we haven't used since I've been there, that I know of at least, that has a yearly maintenance. The spending, the spending just goes and goes and goes. When does it become the word theft?
Right. I mean, Department of Homeland Security.
It becomes the word, it's, it's, it's spending more than you need to spend, right, if you.
Morally though.
And that's, and that's, sure. But that's, um, that's a, that's a, that's a judgment that you have to make. You have to say, okay, here's why, you just gave a prudential argument, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
You gave an argument saying, well, look at the statistics, that the, the, the crime rates are the same, the population is the same, everything is the same. And yet, the, um, the, the, uh, government agency is expanded. That's a prudential argument for saying, well, why are we doing this?
Sure.
That's, that, that's not a, that's not a line in the sand.
I wonder how many city cops we had then.
Saying, that's a prudential argument, and that's, that's, that's moral thinking. In other words, to, to, to have the principle of not spending more than you need to spend, right? And then saying, okay, uh, given the cer- concrete circumstances that I'm looking at, should we be doing this?
Mm-hmm.
And then, but then you have to persuade your fellow citizens that you're right.
Right.
Well, but, yeah, and, yeah, not just persuade them, but first off, you have to educate them on the principles first.
Right.
Because John Dewey has dismantled.
What a nightmare.
A lot.
Well, John Dewey is a subject that, uh, we could spend a whole.
So, so, um, so we had this topic on, on Facebook, uh, and, you know, it was about fire serve. It was about a building being built over in Jefferson Township. Now, I didn't, I don't really care about, uh, about this new building. I'm sure they need a new fire building. I'm not, I'm not questioning whether they need it or not.
He's just being a devil's advocate to make them think.
Advocate about the idea that the taxes, like, I really do think, if we could put our heads together, we could probably figure out a way to do pay for play. But, but regardless, um, you know, we, we started talking about where do you draw your line in the sand as far as taxation goes. And Pam Benzing, which is Brad Benzing's wife, um.
Gave a very good answer.
Yeah, yeah, she, well, Brad, Brad and Pam are both very awesome, honorable people, and they're part of the political process in Hillsdale County.
And they've all been part of the, the emergency services, both of them.
Yeah, so they, they are biased. I can tell you that right now, cause we've had talks.
But they're good people.
But they're awesome, and she told me that she takes her stance at, at, uh, public emerg- emergency services. That's where she's willing to take and draw her moral lines in the sand there.
Said if taxation is theft, she's okay stealing for that.
It, you know, it was so refreshing to hear her say that, because when you talk to politicians, they don't really want to even answer you on something like this. And she was honest about that.
I answered you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, well.
Don't blame me.
Well, basically, you were, you were kinda saying the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You were almost saying exactly the same thing.
I'm sure there's not much light between me and Pam.
I know those folks.
And there's, there's not much light between me and Pam, and there's not much light between me and Will, and there's not much light between Will and Pam.
No.
We, I mean, we're not gonna agree a hundred percent on everything, and if we agree eighty percent, we're doing damn good. So.
Well, we're not diametrically or diabolically opposed.
Yeah, so, so, so that's, he was so honest, and it was great to hear her say that. Now, I wanna, I really can't wait till the person tells me, well, it's okay for us to pay for artwork in the local park, you know, so that, that'd be a great debate. So, so, you know, that was my question, is where do you draw the line in the sand with morals and taxation as far as Will goes? Uh, particularly emergency services, you're, you're saying that tech the political process.
Well, well, what I'm saying is, uh, just to repeat myself, is that we should, uh, take our bearings from the basic principles of the Declaration of the Natural Rights.
Talk up in the mic.
Uh, of natural rights, and, um, take our bearings from that. And then, but i- if you notice in the Declaration, and I actually have a copy of it here, I can read it to you. It, you're talking about, uh, you, you, you have the right to alter or abolish your, your, your government, right? If it's, it's violating your natural rights, institute a new government laying its foundation on such principles, namely the natural rights, organizing its powers in such form as to them, meaning the citizens, shall seem most likely to affect or cause their safety or happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. The very next word is prudence. Prudence means practical judgment. That's what we're talking about here. You've got the principles, natural right principles, those are what you want to, to get at and to affect in real life as much as you possibly can. But you have to be prudent or practical about how you do that. And that's part of moral reasoning too. And that's what we've been doing a lot of really tonight, uh, in, on this show, is trying to work out the, not just the principles, which are pretty easy to state, really, when you get right down to it. It's, uh, it's not rocket science.
No.
And, but the practical part of it.
Practical application.
To get the, you know, try to get the institutions formed that do this, and then to make the prudential judgments with respect to taxation, law enforcement, all these different issues. That's the, that's the, that's the, the devil speaking about diabolical stuff. The devil is in those details.
Details, yeah.
And, um, uh, that's the, that's the, the, one of the key things that, uh, means that citizens should talk to their elected representatives, and the elected representatives should talk amongst themselves publicly, uh, at the, uh, at the meetings.
Do you think there might be a potentially taxation in local government, not just in Hillsdale, I'm saying potential, I'm saying generally speaking here. Do you think there might be unconstitutional levy tax?
Unconstitutional what?
Uh, levied, like, uh, taxes are levied, uh, that are, uh, are any taxes that we, that we're forced to pay that may be deemed unconstitutional.
That are not apportioned?
Yes.
I, I think that you could, i- if, if a tax were, were imposed upon you by an unelected body, that might be unconstitutional.
Yeah.
Would that be like a traffic ticket from a city police?
Well, that, uh, that, no, that, that's, that's statutory though. That is statutory. That is statutory. There, there, the, the city police are enforcing the statute. You can't really blame them for doing their job.
No, 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 I, I'm not blaming them for doing that. I'm just saying sometimes.
Where's your due process with statutory law?
Excuse, what's due process with statutory law?
No, I said, where is it?
Where, it's in the court system.
Well, okay, so like, you don't have a jury of your peers when you go for, and pay for a traffic ticket?
Well, that's, the judicial system is, is set up, that is, is set up so that you have a, a, a judge to, to do some of these, these things, that's right.
So that, that is, that, that, that is constitutional, then?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's been constitu- there have been, there have been non-jury trials for, for forever in the United States.
Well, it's not a trial when you go in front of a magistrate.
Well, whatever you wanna call that.
Well, administration hearing.
Appearance. Well, if it's an administrative hearing, that's a little, that's, that's, that's getting into a, an area that I'm a bit suspicious of.
Most traffic court is administrative hearing, because traffic court is regulatory law.
Yeah, well, see, but the, the regulatory laws is, is kind of framed by statutory law. What you get, the problem you get is when the administrative state types take a very general statutory law and then transform it into something that wasn't intended to be.
Well, do we have an example?
Yeah, well, how about the sex offenders registry, where you've got people that are on it for stopping on ninety-four at two o'clock in the morning and urinating because they couldn't make it to a rest stop and being placed on the sex offenders registry, thus destroying their life. We've even got somebody in Hillsdale that was placed on that and had never committed a sex crime ever, had not been charged or convicted. And in fact, we had a judge that sat right in Hillsdale and told that person that if he could prove that he hadn't committed a crime, that he'd take it into consideration. Although, we believe that you should be innocent until proven guilty.
I can't comment on any particular case, but I can certainly say that, uh, the obvious point is that you, the burden of proof is on the prosecutor, not on the, the accused.
But that, that didn't happen.
Well.
And that hasn't happened a few times.
If, if that, in, in such cases as that does not happen, I'll speak generally, right?
Yes, and, and that's all we're asking you to do is.
That is an injustice.
We're all just asking you to speak generally in that, cause we do understand you don't have the specifics of the case.
Right.
Uh, but yes, when that happens, that is, that is definitely wrong.
So, so, local government obviously has a certain degree or, uh, they got freedom, but we're, like, there's no defining line. I- i- in my opinion, where I see it at least.
Well, it, look, in, in, in law, law attempts to define limits, right? But in applying the law, it's never going to be a precise thing.
No, it's never perfect.
It's never, it's, 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 uh, it's just not.
It's not a perfect science.
That's, uh, that's, that's just part of being, uh, a human being, that, uh, that the circumstances are, are, are variable. And so you have to, there's a, there's a, there's, there's, there's the law that the judge is supposed to follow. But he's also supposed to judge in a, in a, in a, in a, in a practical way about, uh, this particular circumstances of the case. So there might be a case, um, where, where, where one, uh, the same action would be, uh, legal or illegal, you know, depending on the circumstances.
And that's why, that's why juries are so important. That's why jury nullification is so important. Because juries aren't just judging the facts of the case. The juries are actually judging the law itself and how the law is applied. So even though the law is the law, and it was done for a certain thing, it can be being applied incorrectly in that particular instance. And that's why juries have the power to nullify, because that's why they're the highest authority in the land. Because you can kill your wife, her lover, and escape in a Bronco, and if a jury says not guilty, not even the judge can do anything about it. So this is why it's important that people understand their duty, getting back to that duty again, their duty as a jurist, and what.
So important.
And what they are doing, so that these laws aren't arbitrarily inflicted upon the people.
Well, what do you think is the, how do I say this? Why is there a resistance, or what appears, at least for me, cause I'm out in, I'm out in the, on the road talking to politicians a lot, and I see this. Why is there like a resist, in your opinion, not as a politician, but as an individual? Why is there a resistance with the local boards to learn or follow the Constitution?
That's one of those, when did you stop beating your wife type questions?
But why, why, why do you think there's like a resistance though? Like, I, I have my reasoning. Let me explain my, can I explain my reasoning?
Okay, well, let me, let me put, put it on, like, I'm on the Planning Commission. I was just appointed the Planning Commission. So far, I've seen no evidence of resistance to the Constitution on the Hillsdale Planning Commission, so. Uh, but now, is, if there is resistance, let's put it this, let's rephrase your question with your permission this way.
Yeah, no problem.
There is resistance to obeying the Constitution.
Mm-hmm.
In my opinion, it's because, uh, first of all, human beings like power, right?
Self-evidence.
We call that self-evidence.
Right? That's one thing, and, and the, the, the founders understood that. That's why we have the checks and balances and all those different, uh.
Before some of them got dismantled by the progressives.
Yeah, indeed. And, um, the, 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 the other thing is that people are, as, and we've touched on this in, 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 in this conversation before, is that the, the, the very officials that you're talking about are folks who have been gone up through several generations of, uh, of schooling that has not educated them adequately, uh, in, uh, the basic principles of American government.
This is what I think, Will. I think education's a big part of this, but I think more or less, I think when I talk to people, but like, when I talk to like my wife's mother, for an example, or when I talk to even my wife, the Constitution is long and boring to them, okay? I, you know, when you're speaking, uh, religiously to people about like, read the Bible, read the New Testament, it's long and boring. And I think a lot of people kinda put that in context together, almost like it's this long, boring documentation, we gotta know the history. Uh, well, they don't even necessarily know that they have to know the history, because you gotta know the Federalist Papers. Yeah, the Federalist Papers and anti-Federalist Papers, and the history of leading up to that.
Seven hundred years.
Yeah, with Magna Carta, going back to the Magna Carta. So like, you know, a lot of people, go ahead, Will.
Yeah, I think that the Constitution itself is long and boring if you don't see that your interests and rights are at stake in that form of government. And one, so, the educating factor is, uh, 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 there's a famous, uh, 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 saying in, in, in English literature by a man named Samuel Johnson, who was alive at the time the founders were alive, as a matter of fact. He said, "The prospect of hanging in the morning concentrates the mind wonderfully." And what that means is for, uh, uh, apply it to the Constitution, if you don't have this document actually enforced and, and understood, then you're gonna get rolled, because you won't know what your rights are, and you won't understand what your rights are.
I don't think people understand what the stakes are, are in general, right?
I, I help people all the time. I get calls all the time. People are, they don't know what their rights are.
Yeah.
And in essence, because they didn't know what their rights are, is the reason why they're in a lot of trouble in the criminal justice system.
They're guilty.
Whereas if they would've just known their rights, they wouldn't be in near the trouble they're in.
Yeah.
But the problem is, most of them aren't interested in their rights until they're in that trouble.
Right.
Then all of a sudden, they want me to teach them what their rights are.
Until someone knocks on their door.
That's right. But the other thing is, John and I are part of the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association. We're both state directors. Trying to get people to understand the Constitution or take classes for the Constitution won't happen. We, John and I talked to a Monroe State Police, what, three months ago, four months ago, um, same thing. He had no probable cause to pull us over, but it was a great teaching moment.
I got this guy, really good.
It was a great teaching moment.
Pulling a trailer, and, uh, I didn't have taillights on my trailer, it was during the day, and it's not, you don't have to have lights on your trailer as long as they can see your taillights.
If it's a privately owned vehicle. If it's a commercial vehicle, now you're under a different code.
Yeah, you're, I'm not in commerce either. So like, so with that being said, I was just driving to my mother's house, cause we were helping building a fence over there for her. And so the Michigan State Police pulled me over in Monroe.
Nice guy.
Very nice guy. He was probably in his mid-forties or so, to give or take.
Been in the military too.
Yeah, and so he started walking up the car, and I rolled up my window, I was like, hey, before you even asked me anything, what was your probable cause for pulling me over? Like, that was the first thing I asked him.
And he.
And, oh, John, I don't think John even expected this. I kinda just, cause John's, John's a scholar here, I'm not. I'm learning, you know, I'm just.
But the guy handled it so well. I mean, I, I've seen other interactions like that, and, uh, you don't usually get that nice of a response back.
Yeah, usually they get defensive.
Very good when he come back.
Yeah, he didn't get defensive. Usually they get defensive. He was like, well, you didn't have any taillights. And I was like, well, is that probable cause for being, being pulled over? He's like, well, it's a shade of gray.
Yeah, and I said, well, wait a minute, it's not a shade of gray. He said, well, yeah, if you have lights on the trailer, they're supposed to work. And I said, that's a commercial vehicle. That's motor carrier law. That is not a private vehicle. Private vehicle in the state of Michigan, as long as you can see the lights of the vehicle past the trailer during the day, those lights don't have to work. He goes, well, he goes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull, uh, uh, everybody over every day that their lights aren't working.
So he was saying it's a shade of gray. And I caught him, and you know, after we explained it to him, the light clicked.
Yeah.
I bet he didn't pull any trailers over that day that didn't have lights, uh, that were personal.
We had some very, we had a really, really good discussion, and we had some very good learning.
Good there for forty-five minutes to an hour.
Exactly.
Just, just, and we do this regularly with individuals too.
And, but sometimes we find people that are very open to that, even people in authority, but a lot of times.
Majority.
The majority of the time, we get people that, just like that, that township supervisor told us the other night, I'm so sick and tired of hearing about the Constitution. That shakes me at my core, to hear somebody in a leadership position say that they're sick and tired of hearing about the Constitution.
Yeah, that would, i- i- if, if, again, speaking generally, if you take an oath to support the Constitution then, and abide by it, then you should not be sick and tired of hearing about it.
Will, we think you're the exception, though. I mean, like, if you look at all the board members of all the community, eighteen townships, um, that's what, probably close to a hundred people, I think you would find less than one percent actually even read it, let alone know it. You got one or two people.
And the reason why we know this is we've gone around and talked to a lot of people.
And I'm generally speaking.
And I say this a lot, a lot of times. I always ask, I ask officers, I ask lawyers, I, I ask all kinds of people, okay, what's, you took an oath to support the Constitution, right? Oh, yeah. Okay, what's in, what's in the seventh article? Or I'll pull, I'll get, do them a good one, what's in the ninth article?
Ask, you can even, you can even go easy.
They don't even know. They don't even know how many articles are in the Constitution.
You can ask an easy question, is what form of government we are.
Yeah, and you get democracy almost every time.
So, uh, you know, we're, we're proud to have you on the board here, because we do not find the level of, uh, expertise. And I don't think it takes an expert to understand the Constitution.
Just a love of the Constitution.
Just a love and wanting to know it.
I, I can, I, the good news is that I know some of the other, uh, uh, city councilmen personally, and, uh, several of them do know the Constitution pretty well.
I know a couple of the other ones to do.
Hold their own on this show or in any discussion on the Constitution.
Maybe I'm, uh, under, or, or maybe I'm thinking low.
You gotta get to know these guys better.
But I tell you what, I mean, of the probably thirty or forty council people that I've met, I guarantee, I mean, outside of you, I don't know if I've met one.
Will, Will, we'd like to know these people better, but it's hard when you're called the devil.
Uh, so, so, Will, also, when you have an unconstitutional law, do you have to follow it as a politician? Like, do you have to go along with the rules? Can you, can you, like, uh, go, like, uh, like, for an example, John and I running, he ran as a constitutional sheriff. We have, there are laws that are unjust. I, I, I don't know why we wanna deny this, but there are laws that are unjust or considered unconstitutional, um, on a federal level, on a state level. And I can give examples, like marijuana's a good, a good prime example of this one. Um, another one is the right to bear arms. Felons can't carry guns in the state of Michigan.
There's another real good one, and that's the one that Brad Rogers from Elkhart, Indiana stood against.
Oh, yeah, against, with the FDA.
Yeah.
Um, when the FDA came in, they thought they had chlorine and they could just raid people's farms. Uh, that's why you have a constitutional sheriff to stop that kinda activity.
And he did.
So, when you have an unconstitutional or you have an unjust law, then why support that law or why continue it just because it's there?
Well, there's no reason to continue it just because it's there. You'd have to, as an elected official, you mean? I think, uh, you'd have to. I think, uh, you'd have to decide, "Well, okay, do we wanna take this to court? Um, uh, what's the likely outcome?", that kind of thing. We have to, you have to make a practical decision on that, that kind of thing.
And I agree with you there, but let me, as a sheriff, as an elected official.
Right.
Okay, and being part of the Con- the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association, we've got many, many, many examples of sheriffs that have stood against unconstitutional things. And of course, when I said these things when I was running for sheriff, I was told that, uh, "Well, it sounds like I'm gonna pick and choose laws." "No, no, if I take an oath to the Constitution, that is my first primary oath, and that is to support and defend the Constitution, which is your rights, against an overreaching government where a government could overreach."
The question will be, um, the question will be in a legal sense, is the law that I think is unconstitutional, unconstitutional? Right? And that would involve me in the court system.
Sure.
And that's, that's all I'm saying.
And, and all of them-
I've gotta decide whether I think I'm gonna go to the mat on this particular law or not.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, actually, John, we're gonna wrap this up, 'cause we are dragging into some-
Way too long.
We, we're gonna make this a two-part show. I just got one quick question, Will. Right to bear arms, right? See, you're a constitutional scholar, right? It's a state law that felons can't carry guns, right? That's a state law, okay? That's not a national law or anything like that. It's a state law, most states have this law. All right, where felons can't carry guns. So let's just take, uh, Joe Schmo, he didn't pay his child support, and he got $36 behind, and he got a felony for child support. Now, his Second Amendment is restricted, okay? 'Cause you can't carry a gun. Uh, if you get caught with a gun, it's a five-year felony, uh, you go to prison, uh, 'cause you're carrying a weapon.
Even if you have it in your house to defend your family.
In your constitutional knowledge and scholarly, you know, your scholar brain there, how, how does this, how, how does this, is that constitutional to have that law?
Uh, well, it, it-
In your opinion?
I, I, I haven't, I haven't really thought about that enough to give you a, a good answer for that. I know you could ask, though. Is David Rainey, who teaches history at the, um, at Hillsdale College-
Do you know the Second Amendment?
I, I know what it is, sure.
Well, what is it?
But it's-
It's the right to bear arms and to have a well-regulated militia, right?
That's right. You're, you're, you have the right to bear arms, and it's, uh, as, as part of a well-regulated militia and so forth, that's-
Well, it's not really that much more wording to that. I mean, don't get me wrong.
The last four, the last four words say, "Shall not be infringed." That's pretty common English.
Okay, so-
Shall not be infringed.
So, Will, let me, let me-
Right, so what is the, the question is, what is the limit of the right?
Mm-hmm.
In other words, you, if I say I have a right to something, is there a limit to that right?
Well, why did we have that?
There's a responsibility.
Yeah.
You have a right.
Yeah.
And then there's a responsibility.
So I have the right to bear the arm, uh, you, you have the right to bear arms, right?
And you have the responsibility to do it safely.
Safely, and, uh, and, uh, if, 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 uh, um, I, so, so I think it's, uh, it's, you know, I'd have to think about it more.
Well, we'll, we'll get back to you on that question. Let me-
Well, the person that really, to get on, uh, to get on the show, as I say, is David Rainey. Who's, uh, uh, he's a, he's an NRA guy who teaches history at the, at the, at Hillsdale College.
That's perfect, that's perfect.
If you know him, we'd appreciate, uh, if you'd, uh, say something to him.
We'll definitely, we'll, we'll definitely have him on.
Yeah, fall.
Let me, let me, let me tell you this, though, Will is-
He doesn't live around here, but, uh, so he might have trouble getting on, but, well, you know, you might be able to accommodate-
I might be able to go out to him and do something Facebook Live.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, the way I view it is this, it doesn't say the right to bear arms unless you're a felon. It doesn't say the bear, you have the right to bear arms unless you're mentally ill.
It doesn't say you have the right to bear arms only if you're not unsafe, because all of us are held responsible for our- It's, it's like this, let's say, if I go into a crowded theater and I scream "Fire!", but nobody gets up and runs, have I committed a crime? No, because I have the right to free speech, albeit a reckless way that I exercised my right. It was reckless, but no one was hurt, so no one's life, liberty, or, or pursuit of happiness was in, was-
Well, there is this concept of reckless endangerment, um, so, so if you're-
That's where he's gonna go with that.
And that's where I'm going with that. If I, but if I yell "Fire!", and people get up and people get hurt, I'm not charged for using my First Amendment right. I'm charged for the responsibility side of it, for not doing it, for doing it in such a reckless way that it hurts someone. So the same thing with a firearm. I have the right to bear that arm, but if I'm reckless with it and I hurt someone, I'm not charged for the violation of my Second Amendment. I'm charged for negligent homicide, I'm ju- I'm brandishing, I'm for assault. That's what I'm charged with. So why is it, if someone has a felony, why don't we just say that they don't have the right to remain silent anymore? Why is it, we say that we can search them without a warrant? Why don't we take their First Amendment right to speak away? So what we've gone through is, and a lot of us, even constitutional people, are thinking in this Darwinian direct democracy idea, because if someone is dangerous, they shouldn't be on the street, period. That's why we have buildings with bars. If someone is not dangerous, they should be on the street. So why do we have so many people locked up for things that are not dangerous, and yet we wanna take someone's natural right away from them for something that they didn't even do, that they didn't, that they weren't irresponsible with?
Well, this is the problem when you don't, you, you spring a question on me that you didn't ask me to prepare for.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You're right, you're right.
And that, that's not fair.
You drew me into this discussion. My, my lamb-like innocence was being exploited.
I did, I did not put that in a bullet point before I said it, did I?
That was, that was, that was a-
But anyway, so you know our kind, you kinda know our point on that. We won't ask you an opinion on that.
I actually brought that up to let you know, there are things, such, such things as called unjust laws.
Oh, sure, well, I, you, you don't have to let me know that. I know that there are unjust laws, such things as unjust laws.
And I'm saying-
The legal is not the just necessarily. It should be.
And just because it's legal doesn't make it moral.
No, 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 it doesn't make it just.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and that's, and I'm saying locally too.
Yeah.
Sure, of course.